Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Monday, February 22 regular school board meeting. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Okay Superintendent.
First, were there any changes amendments to the agenda?
I'd like to pull 10.01 for some discussion and questions, please. It's the allocations plan.
All right. Any other changes, Board? All right, I'm moving on to the approval of the minutes. I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop, February 1st, 2021, and the regular school board meeting, February 8th, 2021.
We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five aye.
You want public input?
Public input. We have one. Have one person, Mr. Sardar.
And I have one online, Mr. Mathias.
I don't have anything on the screen. There we go. Welcome. Okay. Mr. Sardar. Mr. Sardar, you have three minutes. If you'll give us your name and address.
David Sardar, 66 Wintergreen Drive, Fruitland Park, Florida, 34731. You know, I, kids love presents. Kids love being educated. And kids hold on to toys. Meaning, in your life, you remember what you learned at school. I remember my dad taking me to his school and playing the piano. I was just at the Salvation Army yesterday, and Lieutenant Chris Nowoski, that's building a 50 bed homeless program between, it's a lake in Central office, Lake in Central Salvation Army, where I walk in parades, I volunteer, I volunteer in Orlando. I just came from the Orlando 2pm meeting. I just came from Leesburg Commissioners meeting. You know, my dad taught me respect and values. You know, State Farm out of Illinois, they want to get rid of my insurance. Drew Davis wants to hit me. Other people want to hit me. I've been shot at. But I've been in Tallahassee, and I was a warman. You know, I was a candidate. Alan Hayes, I got his pen right here. He won't let me in. There's ethic laws. Senator Backsley, he calls me his buddy. They, they call that ethic laws. You know, Lady Lake gave me a blue and a red. C.T. Eagle, the public works director, they had told me, as Rhett Hags office has, to do county and city meetings. At school boards, I've done Central County, I've done Barrow County. But you know, I could use my job back. You know, I didn't do anything wrong. I went back on the property because I'm a concerned citizen. And by God, I did just leave Leesburg Commissioners meeting. I'm going to Wildwood at 7 o'clock. And I've been up in Tallahassee, I've been to joint administrative meetings. I've been, met the Senate President and House Speaker. And by God, I'm leading the campaign for a great guy, and his wife did her presidential material. I was in the Leesburg parade with the kids beforehand. Because of the bad COVID, the bad symptoms. But I'll let you know that Kathy Myers, the chief of staff of the Senate, said, "Why don't we get you two black place masters before criminal procedure?" She'd been a staff leader for years, and she was the chief leader. I didn't know Congressman Daniel Wester. I went to Daniel Wester Junior High School, Waukegan, Illinois. Was a House Speaker. At one time, and she was even there. And she awarded me two masks before criminal justice. Criminal justice, too much drinking and drugging. The people that are in jail, hey, the citizens are crying out. This is so tough on us, we gotta go so far. Hey, they shouldn't be in there. They should take the classes that are in there. I'm part of an association that doesn't drink, doesn't, we teach us. There's too much drinking and drugging out there. The street, somebody just, over the weekend, I told the officers, some guy's nuts out there. You guys have a big problem. You know, a lot of, COVID's out there. I know what you're dealing with. My, my dad had to deal with a lot of problems too. He worked with the superintendent, who started the College Lake County. You are the leaders, you're elected officials. But by God, I got some laws out there, maybe they'll work, the respect laws for our kids' future. You are the leaders that could be up in Tallahassee speaking. As I saw, Vice Chairman of the Indian River.
Mr. Sardar, your time is up, sir.
Have a great day, every day.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for our kids. Okay, and then we have someone.
I have Ms. Cronin, Mr. Mathias.
Okay, great. Mrs. Cronin, if you, if you'll state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. It, you're on mute. There you go.
Kim Cronin, SEIU representative. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. I see tonight on your agenda, you have a revision to the staffing plan for the 2021 school year. Not sure I understand. Does the grant end in June of '21? Or will we see another revision to the 2122 staffing plan? Normally, a position ends with the grant. I'm not sure, listening to you talk about this a few weeks ago, I don't know if that's what you plan on doing. The fiscal impact is $30,638. And I'm taking that as for the rest of the school year, for four months. I don't understand why we're paying more than the grant offers. I did see the position posted, maybe a week or so ago. And I don't remember what it stated, whether it was a temporary position, or stated it was a grant position. You know, I listened, I listened a couple of weeks ago, where this would be a supervisory position, under Amy Cockroft. And it just, it seems like this district is always concerned about supervisors having too much to supervise. You know, we have our custodians that are the lowest paid employees in the district, that have had more added on to their plate this year because of COVID. Nobody really seems very concerned. The schools are shorthanded every day. On a daily basis, they're, they're missing two to three custodians, sometimes more. They're not allowed to get overtime. They put it out to cafeteria workers to see if they wanted to earn extra money, but they can't go into overtime. We have four unassigned custodians that are working during the day. Mostly doing spring for COVID. We need, we need extra help at night, when the schools are being cleaned. That's when our custodians are at their, their roughest spot. You're also approving the 2122 staffing plan tonight. I really haven't heard much discussion. So I haven't heard anything about any type of cuts or anything. So I guess what we're saying by approving this tonight is that we've got the money to do this, and we're all set. But I have major concerns about next year. The district is gonna have to raise almost 300 employees pay up to $10 an hour. And still try to offer other, other staff a raise. I haven't heard any discussion about that, no workshop about that, or how we're gonna do this. Do we have a plan? I don't know. You know, normally, right now, we're negotiating for next school year. We're not there now. We're still waiting to come back to see if there's any more money for this year. 2% really wasn't a big thing for the employees this year.
Mrs. Cronin, you're at three minutes.
All righty, I thank you.
Thanks so much. Good.
Could we, could we also ask that 9.03 just gets those questions answered in the public record before we vote on that one?
I agree.
We're going to be discussing that. Mrs. Cronin, if you want to stay on, that'd be fine with me. Listen, okay. Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Nothing, sir.
Superintendent?
Okay, I recommend approval of consent agenda eight items, 8.01 to 9.02, and 9.04. And 10.02.
I don't have a 9.04.
You said 9.04, right.
8.01 to 9.02, and 10.02.
Okay.
Am I right that time?
You've heard the Superintendent's recommendation.
So moved.
Need a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five aye. Okay. So we're back to 9.03.
Yeah, so 9.03, this is, as she mentioned, was the item that we discussed when the grant was being reviewed. So the Board has already approved the grant, and this was a grant funded position. It is working under Ms. Cockroft. In part, in order to utilize the grant funding, this was coming from the state, it required that you have a, someone to supervise or oversee the grant, which was the data pieces of that. So I know Dr. Felton can probably provide more information specific to the questions. But I know at the time, some of it was also coming out of some other federal dollars. And so I believe it was Title II, possibly, where that, where it was actually being split funded from. And the grant was covering that for this year, and then we're moving it under the federal dollars for next year.
So this, the agenda says it's got the fiscal impact of $30,638. That's entirely the grant, so it doesn't have any alternate sources of funding for this year. Is that right? 100% grant funded?
That's my understanding. Dr. Felton, is that correct?
That is correct. By the time we get it hired, and it goes to July 1st, that would be the, or goes to October. Yeah, there's no other funding right now for it. For this year's budget.
So this funding is for until July? Is that the idea? And then in July, the federal funding kicks in?
Till October, right?
Till October, yes.
That would be on the new fiscal year, so we would approve that set of funding separately, right, when the staffing plan comes back?
What is this, what is this? Or what is the grant, I guess?
So it's a, it's a data grant. It, it, it is training someone who will oversee the work of developing common assessments, how to best utilize data to drive instruction. So there'll be training components. Again, it's coming from the state, so there'll be some other resources that will be coming along with it, which is why they required, because of the investment on the state's part, that there be someone who oversees the, the management of the grant, as well as the training for the district, specifically for developing of common assessments and other data points.
So this director piece is just one component of that grant. Do you recall what the, I guess, the value of all the other part of that grant that we're getting?
Can you provide all of the grant information? I know that there was, there was more, more that was included in there.
There was. I'm gonna let Amy in, so that Amy can, because she wrote the grant, and so it'd be easier for her to talk firsthand about it. So I'm gonna let Amy talk a little bit about, about it. There are a few other components, although the main component is that, the main money component is that piece. It's working with the new formative assessment with APM, it's, so, Amy, hi. Can you talk a little bit about the grant itself? What you wrote in it, what was written in it?
I'm sorry, I was on delay still. Yes, the grant offers, it has to be for the position of the person for the data informed specialist. So they have to work on immediate interventions for math and ELA as needed, in, in order to gap in from COVID. It runs through October, that's just the fiscal piece through the end of June. And then the new staffing plan would have the requirements for the grant that goes through October. And then would be grant, other grant funds to continue it through the remainder of next year. It, it's heavily data, and then the PD that goes along with the data.
Do we know what grants will pay for it after October of next year?
Title II is the one we are looking at for that, yes.
Is this a mandated administrative?
It is required if, in order to get the grant funds, yes.
I, well, I, I guess I feel like it would be nice to see like a layout of the, what the grant is for. Because I think, I remember being like, if we get the grant, then we could fund the position. But if we don't get the grant, we won't fund the position. And now I don't even remember what the grant was for. Like, and I mean, she's saying it's for data, but like, we don't, like, can we see? Or can we, can we pause and let your tablet and do like a line item?
I know that was provided in the budget when it was, when you, the Board approved the grant, yes.
And it was, it wasn't if we got the grant. We knew we were getting the grant. It's basically you write for the grant. And so we, we approved the grant, we approved the job description. So tonight was just really a formality of getting it back on the staffing clamp plan, because we always bring the staffing plan if we add any kind of administrative position.
Do you, do you recall the, the total dollar value of this, this particular grant?
The entire grant is $88,000.
Are we gonna pay another 30?
That's part of the, that's grant dollars.
After, like, after July, in July, after the fiscal year?
No, we'll have the remainder of the grant to run through October of next year. And then it would be filled in with Title II dollars from there.
Oh, it starts now? Oh wait, I thought we just said that this $30,000 would get us till the fiscal year.
Pays now to July.
And then we would still have to pay from July to October?
With the grant.
With grant.
Oh, okay.
It's all grant dollars.
That, I misunderstood.
And after October.
So essentially, this grant covers this position.
Right, that's what I'm reading.
Oh, okay. So, so are, will the $30,000 that we're paying now from Gen will be repaid to us through the grant?
It's, we're not paying it out of General, it's coming out of the grant.
It's just paid by, by the, by the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
We're good.
Okay, I get it now.
Okay, Superintendent, you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of item 9.03 revisions to the staffing plan.
Heard the Superintendent have a motion?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five aye. Okay.
We're moving on to 10, 10.01, and Mr. Dodd, pull that item for discussion.
Good, Mr. Dodd?
Yes. Sorry, I don't, I don't see a copy of it here. I'll, but I think, I think my notes are probably pretty good. So I did have some, some questions on this one, and perhaps it's probably because maybe I, I read it a little more thoroughly than I, I normally do. The first question I, I was confused about was this reference to a 60% of allocation factor, and trying to understand exactly what that meant in the, in the document, or if, if we even need that. Because I think that the way you all allocate the positions, you look at each one on, on some sense of need, right? So. Guess I was posing this one as a question.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
So yeah, Mr. Dodd, I think that that's, language has been there for a long time. And so I, I can see why we could, you're talking about number three, right, on page two?
That's right. Mm-hmm, yeah, the first sentence. Because I think the second half of that sentence is, is still important, that, you know, obviously, you've got to have space and resources available in order to allocate positions, but.
So what you're asking is to strike the first sentence and leave the second one in. It says for additional, to be, on pages four, five, and six, to be considered enrollment must remain above the threshold the remainder of the year. Is that correct?
That's right. Mm-hmm. Does that make sense?
It does make, it does. I think it's an oversight.
Yeah.
And then my, my other question was on, was on page, page three. I know, I understand the intent, just because I was part of this Board when, when we made that decision about the ability to trade your discretionary enrichment allocation for a CRT. But I don't, I don't see any sort of note here that actually allows you to do that. So I was wondering if perhaps we should. No, because at the top, it says you get four enrichment allocations. So this discretionary allocation, I read that to mean it's, you get to pick an enrichment at your discretionary, aside from art, music, PE, STEAM, that kind of stuff. So if you're gonna trade that for a CRT, that doesn't seem like an enrichment to me. But I know that the intent of this Board at the time was that you could trade that. So I just wanted to maybe offer up some sort of clarification. Maybe we put a little, maybe a slash, enrichment slash?
CRT.
Slash.
Discretionary.
Or other related, other similar position, I don't know.
About slash discretionary, does that cover that?
Well, CRT and an enrichment teacher are not the same.
No.
Right. Yes, so that's.
CRTs get continued, they get extra days. They get, they have an extended contract. Enrichment teachers do not. So how is it equitable or equal? Yeah. CRTs have an extended contract, they work days beyond. Enrichment teachers work 196 days. So how can you trade one for the other? At the discretion of, I'm assuming it's the principal. But they're not equal in salary. Do we not, are we not concerned with that? I mean, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that they're not equal.
I don't think any of us knew that.
No, you didn't know.
No, they're not.
I was the minority vote on that one, didn't I?
An enrichment teacher is a regular teaching salary, 196 days.
I didn't know CRTs were, no wonder principals like.
Well, we like, they like them for other reasons.
Right, their, their.
But is that, but do we allocate extra days beyond for CRTs? Or is that a principal's decision?
That's just, no, that's just a part of how they.
I thought they were instructional also, I didn't.
They are instructional, but they're like other, you know, instructional units that have extended contracts. They have days beyond.
But that, that was not, that was not an issue before. It's more about the position.
Okay.
I think. Right?
My only concern was if you had 10 principals decide to do that.
Who would you?
Well, you've got a bunch of days beyond, so that's gonna increase the salary. But do we have enough latitude to cover that? I mean, if it's not a financial concern, it's not an issue for me, it's just that they're not.
Can I interrupt for just a minute? Our CRT, if you notice, like, our, on page nine, our CRTs nor are, they don't, they are not guaranteed extended days beyond their contract. They would have to have other funding sources to be able to pay them to like facilitate professional learning, or do some of that, do some of that work. But they're not guaranteed days beyond.
They don't come to work five days before the regular teachers anymore?
No, they do not.
I think the principals have chosen to use some, like, PD funds to pay them to do that, but I don't think it's.
PE funds?
Not PD.
PD. PD funds.
Grab a kickball. Let's go.
Could be fun.
Yeah, they're, they're not referenced in the, the extended days chart on page nine, so.
Right.
So on the language, Todd.
Well, we, he mentioned just putting slash discretionary as one way to clarify that.
So you could read on the heading, it would be elementary enrichment slash discretionary instructional allocations. And then the sentence would say each elementary school will be allocated four instructional allocations to be used for enrichment slash discretionary.
That's right.
Okay, we're good.
Right, right, because the four bullets there guarantee that you'll still have PE, art, or STEAM, music. And then this discretionary, you could use.
Right. Okay, so we're good.
Another instructional way.
Okay, next.
Can I, can I mention one more thing that was said by Ms. Cronin? I just, I want to make sure that the Board understands that I did. I know she mentioned that there was not a lot of conversation about allocations. We did have a meeting. I sent it out with changes. I asked for feedback. I actually sent it out a second time with a couple revisions, asked for more feedback. So I just wanted to be, to make it clear to you all that we did the allocation process as, as expected. And so there was plenty of opportunity to give input and to be able to give feedback if someone, and she is, she does serve on the allocation committee.
Okay.
Can you comment on the changes in the allocations? Well, how like, obviously, we've lost some kids at some schools and gained some at other schools. And how do we, like, Sawgrass had its own category, and now is in the category with Grassy Lake and Tiberius, which I think is really surprising. So, I mean, are we serving? I just, I thought Sawgrass, I just thought Sawgrass was really overcrowded.
Well, remember, we have a new school opening, and so Sawgrass will, will now, many of the students will be going into Lake Point.
This is the allocation for next year.
That makes sense. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. So do we want to just get rid of those two columns, or do we leave them? I guess we.
I, I think you all update those columns after you get new projections of where the schools fall in their, in their totals. So I, I think we're really more so approving the, the thresholds, you know, at 1,000, you get this, or 1,500, you get that, so on and so forth. And the school names will adjust appropriately based on enrollment.
Okay.
Like, Claremont Middle will come off as they close.
Okay.
Any other comments? Superintendent again.
All right, I recommend approval of 10.01, the personal allocation formula, with the changes that the Board has, has made this evening.
You've heard the Superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five aye. Okay.
Am I up first tonight? All right. Well, then I get to be the first to congratulate our Rookie Teacher of the Year and our School Related Employee of the Year, because I know Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Dodd, were on the whirlwind tour. Was that last week? Oh my, the week has, has gone by quickly, as we celebrated our Rookie Teacher of the Year and School Related Employee of the Year finalists. And I just want to recognize them. Our rookie teachers are Amy Cross from Rhymes, Jacob Carey Arrow from Mascot Charter, and Teresa Spann from Umatilla High. And our support staff finalists are Sandra Bolinsky, the bookkeeper at East Ridge Middle, April Dempsey, who's the food service manager at Grassy Lake, Sampson Backer, a custodian at Groveland Elementary, and Carly Nelson, a TA at Leesburg Elementary. And we look forward to celebrating with them with our upcoming hybrid celebration on March the 10th. Also, last Monday, we did round two of our COVID vaccines for all eligible employees. So I want to thank again the Department of Health and Emergency Management for working with us on that endeavor. And especially our school nurses. We had 22 school nurses that went through the training so that they could give the vaccines and be available, and hopefully, as, as more and more employees become eligible, to be able to help us with that. We did get word from the Department of Health last week that we can now offer vaccines to any employees with pre-existing health conditions. So Ms. Owens is gonna be sending out that information. They do have to provide a doctor's note, and they have to meet the specific criteria that's provided by the CDC. And so we'll be looking to, to get those folks vaccinated very soon. Also, I want to remind everyone that we are accepting nominations for the new inductions into our Alumni Hall of Fame. And so if you have anyone that you, that you would like to nominate, please do so, that we have all that information on our website. And also, I just want to publicly congratulate Mr. Chad Farnsworth. It's very bittersweet, and we're gonna miss him greatly, but we still have him for a few more weeks before he transitions as a Superintendent over in Seminole County. And we're very proud of you, and know that you're gonna do amazing work there, and just want to extend again my congratulations to you. And also, we had our first naming committee meeting, that was on Friday. And all of your representatives were in attendance, and I think we're just contributing greatly to the very first meeting. And so hopefully, they'll be back, and they'll continue the work of that committee. And I just want to thank Mr. Felton for agreeing to, to serve as the Chair. And they did some great work in their first meeting, so thank you. And please continue your, encouraging your appointees to attend those meetings.
Well done. Okay, Board Member comments? And we'll go differently this time. Mr. Dodd, we'll start with you.
All right, sure. Well, I certainly enjoyed that worldwide tour we went on all over Lake County to recognize seven fantastic individuals. It was quite a delight to see their surprised faces when they'd come out and witness the celebration, so that was, that was very nice. And in the spirit of celebration, I'd like to give a shout out and congratulations to some kids, some students at East Ridge High School. The Knights of Aeronautics were the state winners in the real world design challenge. And what's pretty fun about this is they, this is a challenge where they have to address something confronting various industries. And in this particular challenge, these, these kids designed an aircraft package delivery system. Who knew that could be done by, by some high school students? But boy, they're, they're turning a lot of heads, because they have three utility patents pending for their work, which is certainly pretty remarkable, huh? And I think they take a lot of pride, because they developed a system that would autonomously load the packages before taking off, so.
That's cool.
I, I tell you, it just blows my mind, the, the caliber of work from this group. So big congratulations to them, and best of luck in their next step.
Well done. This is Cunningham.
That's it.
I too enjoyed the trip around Lake County. It's quite a long ways to get around from the south end to the north end and back again.
Yeah.
So my hat's off to those of you who do that every day. I'd also like to share with you that I attended Florida School Board Association's budget workshop. I think it was week before last. It was actually hosted in Howie. I had an opportunity to meet a lot of new board members from around the district. I believe all of our neighboring districts had at least one member present. And it was quite informative. Our discussions were led by the chief financial officer from St. Johns County. And she was quite knowledgeable and left us with a lot to think about. Also, I did receive a phone call from someone in the community who informed me that they love to see the buses on the road, they like to see them filled with children. However, they were concerned that perhaps we should wash them more often. So I told them that I was certain that there was someone who was responsible for that, and that would happen. I'd like to also reiterate Mrs. Cronin's concern about custodial staff. I think it's important that we look at just making sure that they have the amount of help that they need, or the flexibility of getting someone else to help them when someone is out. Because of course, we want our children to return to school in August, which means we need the buildings to be very clean, not just for the students, but for our employees. So I think if someone could just please revisit that again and make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure we're providing for them. And I think that's it.
I, I went through the financial meetings, and they were very helpful.
Yeah.
Dr. Burns?
Oh, sorry.
Now you've taught to all of us.
So I, I handed you all, or I handed this out at the beginning, and I gave one to Natalie for public record. But this is Academica's Florida real estate operations. I've been spending some time looking into Academica, who are the owners of what I think is pronounced, oh, microphone, right. It's been a while since I've used a microphone. Okay, am I good? No. Okay. Okay, so, um.
It's on.
It's not red, yeah. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, so I have, this is Academica's Florida real estate operations. We have a company called Mater. I think it's Alma Mater, like alma mater, that is looking at a Leesburg charter. But, um, I'm really, I knew Academica had a poor reputation. They are the, they are the, I want to say franchise owners of the Mater company. So even though Mater's a, what, 501(c) nonprofit, really, they just funnel money to Academica. And like, this, this is one paper that talks about how they do it. And one of the ways they do it is just by charging more rent. So the, the base company, Academica, buys, gets the land through public funds. Then they, then they have their own people and their own board. And those people then make a deal with Academica to lease that land that they just got with public funding. And, and then they lease it at high, extra high rates. And they found in this paper that the difference was about a 40% difference, leading to Miami Dade losing, Miami Dade kids losing about $4 million in just money that came out of money that should go to kids, and money was, was funneled to Academica charter operator. And it's really remarkably corrupt, but not illegal in Florida. So I just really feel like the public should know, and we should talk about it more because this is about as corrupt as I've ever seen, and I didn't know it was this obvious. So I gave you to the board because all of the information that I like independently verified is like legit. So if you look at the references, if you dig, you'll find the names of the people that are all in bed with each other. It's just remarkable. So I don't even know if we'll be able to even vote on this charter. The laws are very confusing, and it's a school of hope. And this hope that will be given is a bunch of corruption, from what I can gather. So I just wanted the public to know that, and on Monday, we'll have a board meeting, is my understanding, right?
Yes, so the workshop where this application we presented to you will be on March the 1st at 9:30.
Okay. So, yeah. I just wanted you guys to be aware, even if it's nothing we can do about it. I just think, I was really surprised at the level of corruption, because I knew like, of them in the back of my head, but I just didn't realize how thorough it was. But I've spent a fair bit of time looking into it, and I'm really disappointed. So we'll do our best to make it as painless as possible, I guess. And that's, that's all I have for today. Oh, and I also wanted to thank the board for all your accommodations with the virtual meetings. My son is doing much, much better, and I'm really thrilled to be back, and that he's better. Thank you.
Excellent. Mrs. Luke?
I held these comments from our meeting on Thursday, so it's, it's been actually the week before last that, that I was able to, you know, it's been a weird year with us not being able to go into schools, really, with no visitors and such. And so I had a ton of things that I was going to donate to, one of our family school liaisons, and I hadn't seen or, you know, dealt with someone in that position in a long time. So Ms. Miller at Astetula Elementary School invited me to come and drop off and to see what was going on in her clinic. And when a couple of the teachers found out that I was going to be doing that, they invited me to come to their classrooms. They were celebrating Rock Their School, Rock Your School. So I literally got to go into a second grade classroom that was completely dark. They had a black light in the classroom. They were using highlighters to write with, but it popped so much that you could read it very easily. They all had shirts. One of my UCF interns was in that class, and her brother donated shirts from Skyzone in Claremont, I believe. So they were all glowing shirts. They had glowing hats, and they were actually looking for authentic text on Jackie Robinson, and they were highlighting text evidence and having partner discussions, but it was all in this very fun, black light feel. And I just remember thinking, that guy right there would just have such a good time in a second grade classroom like that. And her partner, Ms. Sattlemeyer, that was Kristen Lamrow, she's a second grade teacher at Astetula. Her partner, Ms. Sattlemeyer, did an 80s day, and so they were all dressed in their 80s, their 80s gear, which makes me laugh when we think about the 80s. But it was nice, not having been in schools in so long, to see such refreshing and fun things happening in buildings, and spending the day with little kids, because I do kind of miss it, I realized whenever I was there. And that very same day, I got to go to Serinto Elementary School and judge their Tropicana speech contest. And so it was a day for me, it was filled with learning and listening to children, and they're just, they look like they're thriving, and they're doing great. And so I wanted to share that opportunity with you guys, because I feel like they're very limited this year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Luke. I do want to encourage the Monday workshop, we will be speaking about the Academica Mater, I think, or Mater, their, their, their packet. So I think that that will be a very good opportunity, supposed to have a very vibrant conversation about it. And other than that, I think we're done. So meeting adjourned.